Good morning and welcome to today's Town of Bladensburg Special Work Session for Thursday, November 5th. At this time, we'll call the meeting to order. The purpose for today's meeting is to address two follow-up things from the October work sessions and council meetings that needed additional time before the council could have discussion, further discussion and make decisions on them. So one was the Residential Emergency Repair Grant Program. And then the second item was the 58th Avenue Construction Amendment. So with that, I will turn it over to Mr. Tenelli, our Acting Town Administrator, to walk us through these items.
Thank you, Mayor. And everybody watching. The reason why, as the mayor said, we're having a special work session this morning is because these things are very time-sensitive. Four or five days does make a difference, especially in as the weather gets colder with the 58th Avenue road improvements and also to help our residents. The first thing on the agenda is something I brought back from the discussion that we had at the last work session, it was a residential emergency grant repair program. This is something we drafted up similar and have to give props to the town of Riverdale Park. We modeled after their grant program, but we made a lot of adjustments for Bladensburg. And actually, I think we firmed it up more. So it's better transparency and broader scope of what can be applied for. Now, we talked about last mayor and council work session about taking approximately $10,000 out of our community events line item and repurposing that into this program. As we get into this discussion, whatever's approved, if it is approved, I will come back with an emergency budget ordinance at Monday's meeting to transfer funds needed to fund this program out of community events. So that's kind of like the, just setting the table for everybody. We've had a couple major events here, the September 10th flooding. And we also had a, in the same area, we had a, an impact to a building from a vehicle which displaced residents who may have already been displaced or were not currently displaced. And what we try to do is, our residents have insurance, but sometimes it just doesn't cover everything, even flood insurance. I mean, Miss Route went through, I think that last work session, it doesn't really cover contents, doesn't cover any displacement issues, it covers more structural. And this is a program that we crafted. And the way I have it written right now, and this is up for discussion, is this program is up to $1,000 for each recipient, and it's on a matching basis. The reason why we did it on a matching basis, and this is up for discussion, is, you know, so they have skin in the game as well. Meaning that they're going forward with the repairs, we're helping out, we're helping them out, 50% of the repairs up to $1,000. Up to is key, because if they only did $1,200 repairs, the grant only gives $600. One of the things too, that I've heard from residents is they have problems even being the insurance deductibles. So one of the things I added on here as a qualified expense is insurance deductible payments. Because homeowners insurance, sometimes you have like $1,000 deductible, and somewhere even up to $2,500. And I put eligible uses of the grant funds include hot water tank systems, and this is more for the public, if you can't see it on the screen, roof leaks, water cleanup, mold remediation, tree removal. One of the things that qualify for this grant, we put on here, a sudden, severe and/or catastrophic loss, meaning it's not wear and tear. It's got to be something weather-related, something major that's, you know, is not like a very slow deterioration. And it's only available to owners. So rental properties, you know, are not going to count. And there is a small application process, and this is, as we can see on here, applicant must be current with local real estate taxes on the resident, and must not be any code violations prior to the catastrophic event. Repair work must be done by licensed contractor. That's easily traceable because a licensed contractor, you know, is a tradesperson and they're going to do an invoice for the goods. And the grant funds on a reimbursement basis. You pay the money out and then you apply back to this grant fund. It has a 90-day period. And have this going out through June 30th. So it's not just events that have happened, it could be for future events. And it's a very small program, but I have to bring it back to mayor and council, it's $10,000. If you're talking up to $1,000, you're talking 10 recipients realistically, unless that wants to be expanded or withdrawn. I mean, I'm just bringing this all to mayor and council versus what we talked about two or three weeks ago. So I'm going to stop there. If you all have any questions, comments?
Sure. So I think all of us probably have some questions, so if it's okay, I'll just go around the room. Councilmember Blatt, any questions?
Um, with the grant, you said some of the money has to be paid back, or is it a different process with the grant? If they get the money, they have to pay it back?
It's going to be a grant. It's going to be given, there's no payback period. Now, I think the town, Riverdale Park, said if you get to stay in the area for three years, for us, I don't know how we can track that, honestly. Unless we see it on the property tax rolls, unfortunately, that could be a full year after. So it's, that's the only issue, so.
Maybe I missed something. So a grant, if they get, as I said, they get $600, they have to pay that back, or that's great?
No.
Okay.
Yep, yep, yep.
I'm good.
Okay. Thank you, Councilmember Blatt. Councilmember Lundie?
Yes, I just have a few comments. I just wanted to talk. It's my, I was.
I know, I know.
Oh, Lord. Okay, so, conditions of the application. So bullet number three. For me, I don't think that the residents should be penalized for past code violations with the town and the county because they didn't know that they were going to have, that it was going to be an unforeseen weather catastrophe. So I don't think that should be a stipulation, because I don't think that's fair.
Okay.
I don't think that's fair to the residents not knowing, even though they are, you know, let's deal with them with these code violations or what have you. But I don't think they should be, a resident should be penalized because they have outstanding when they didn't know it was going to be a weather catastrophe or some kind of situation unforeseen by God.
Okay.
Or whatever, or the weather or what have you. That's just my personal, I mean, I'm still speaking. I'm still speaking. So that's what I wanted to say about that. So it's up to my colleagues to agree or disagree, but that's just my comment. My second thing is, this is minor to me, but I think it should be on there. I don't see anywhere on the application or the documentation that should be, should be an application response time from the town of Bladensburg upon receipt of application. So I think it should be, we should let the residents know how soon we're going to get back to them.
Okay.
And that should be spelled out in the application. Also.
Like 15 days?
Whatever, whatever we decide, whoever decides. And then my other comment is, I think there should be a point of contact listed here. It should be information included about how the resident can submit the application. I don't foresee COVID-19 being here forever, so, and for instance, via fax, via email, in person, or through intake or what have you. I think that should be spelled out in the application somewhere.
Understood.
Yeah. And that's it, that was minor. So my only major thing was the point on bullet number three. So I yield back.
Thank you, Councilmember Lundie. I think the, and I'll let Councilmember Mendoza comment on it, the way that I look at bullet three is if you take into account any prior code violations, they could be exacerbated by a disaster, and so would it be fair for us to use these grant funds that are kind of offsetting a problem that was pre-existing prior to the catastrophe? So I think that is why I have some concerns with not taking any code violations into account. But Councilmember Mendoza, I'm going to pivot over to you for feedback also, because didn't you work for code with the county at one point? Yeah?
My comment on the code is, okay, a tree falls in my house, right? I'm written up for code. But then the weather comes in, then I'm trying to use that to say, oh, give me money for this, but it was already a violation before the storm. That was my comment on that.
Great. Thank you, Councilmember Mendoza.
And that's where I was going with that too, like current code viol, I should say that, you know, like current code violation.
That makes sense, if it's current. Councilmember Route, did you want to add to that?
Yes. Thank you, Councilmember Lundie, for bringing that. I too had an issue with bullet number three. I think it should say code violations within the last 30 days, because, because of COVID, there are a lot of code violations that are backed up. They are looking at code violations, I know on my block in the town of Bladensburg, they're looking at code violations that were from January, February, and the hearing was just last night. And the town of Bladensburg code enforcement was not present at that hearing. So I do think that we need to put a time window, if that is the pleasure of the council. But I do agree with Councilmember Lundie. If a resident is already having a hardship, I don't think any resident or any homeowner in the town just wakes up to and say, I just want to violate code. It may be misinformation, it may be miseducation. And so I think that we need to aid on the side of supporting our residents. And so the language of current in the last 30 days should be appropriate. I yield back.
Councilmember Mendoza, again, just because you've actually worked code enforcement for the county, any thoughts on that, on, you know, putting in a time limit in there? And what do you think? Just because I know you've done code enforcement, what's reasonable?
Instead of a time war, like, I don't know how to articulate, it's like, you cannot claim something that was already existing, like pre-existing condition, as they call it.
That's good.
You cannot claim something that was already there. So if you, if we were claiming, punishing you for your car, but it was your house, a tree fell down, tree has nothing to do with your car. Like, you know, like it shouldn't be related to the, to the problem you're trying to claim this.
So, and I'm just going back to the application. So the sentence that says a sudden, severe and/or catastrophic loss, I think it should be, or damages sustained during a weather event, fire, natural disaster, or other event which caused sudden damages needing immediate attention. So is it there that it would make sense to just spell out that this cannot be due to a prior situation? Or do you want to just add that as a bullet? So it's just, I just want to make sure it's clearly identified, so the homeowner knows it can't be due to something that happened previously.
How about 30 days, like Jocelyn said, 30 days, within 30 days, that's giving them, which we're trying to help them, not hurt them.
Yeah.
So again, the 30 days seem like a reasonable time, because you're right, you don't want to take money that someone's just been lacking and not getting fixed, and now, okay, I got money, I can get it fixed. So within a certain amount of time, if it's not 30, 45, or whatever you come up with. But within those days is fine, but to fix somebody's problem, and they already had it, I don't, I don't, I'm with Chris, I don't see why we should.
Okay.
I can add another bullet point there, on the, it says like no pre-exist, not going to cover pre-existing.
Perfect.
Damages, and.
Yes. And then I'm going to go back to Councilmember Lundie. Councilmember Route?
So normally, so I write grants for living in the Department of Behavioral Health in DC. I'm actually over a lot of grants. Normally, there's a definition session, section of a grant application that defines the terms, and so pre-existing condition would need to be defined. In addition to conditions, there, it needs to be clearly stated if that is a bullet, because that can be, you know, interpreted any other way. So I still am in favor in putting 30, within the last 30 days, pre-existing conditions. I'm not in favor of that.
No.
No. Yield back.
So Councilmember Lundie, going back to your original question, so adding the additional language that Mr. Tenelli mentioned as another bullet, does that work? And then in addition to that, just spelling out the separate point regarding could not, has to have occurred within the last 30 days, or however, Councilmember Route said it, I know, Mr. Tenelli, you were documenting that, but does that get to the heart of what you were raising with the question?
Yes, yes. I think that would be safe and applicable.
Okay. And then the other things I was hoping, and Vito, I can email the language to you, but just going back to page one, where the sentence talks about an emergency repair is defined as, I think it's also important to add in there, if left unattended would jeopardize the health or safety of the occupants, just to make it clear that this isn't.
Perfect.
Water gas spilled on Keisha's carpet. You know, I just want to make sure that we're being very precise in how we indicate that.
Can you say that last part again, if left unattended?
Yes. If left unattended would jeopardize the health or safety of the occupants. And then at the bottom of the page, the paragraph starts out with the total grant funds amount. But I was just thinking, it might be better to spell out applicants are received on a first-come, first-served basis, so that people understand the fund is the fund, and we can't keep going back and blowing up, you know, increasing the size of the fund. It really is intended just to be a small pot of assistance for those in need of immediate help or emergency support. And then dropping down to the last bullet, repairs must be completed and submitted for reimbursement within 90 days of the grant award. I just want to make sure it's clear, so the repairs must be completed within 90 days of the award, but where we say submitted for reimbursement, prior to, we were saying as long as they show documentation for 50% of cost up to $1,000. So I think we just need to make sure it's clear when they can submit for the reimbursement. Is it at the 90-day mark, or is it prior?
My thought on this last bullet was, you know, if somebody gets, going back to our first-come, first-served basis, if somebody gets the grant award in like October and doesn't do the repairs until March or April, we could have like, we purpose those funds of somebody that could have needed them a little bit quicker maybe. So that's where I was trying to get to with that. So help me out with the language there, just trying to, you know.
Yeah. Councilmember Route?
I would recommend putting, so in the grant process, there should be a grant award, like a documentation, like a letter that's sent out to the awardee or the self-grantee. And so there, there should be language to say 90 days from approval or denial of your...
That's what I was trying to get to.
Yes.
Can you say that again? I'm trying to take notes. It was good.
Yeah, I know.
A grant determination letter should be sent, and within 90 days of receipt of the grant determination letter, repairs should be completed and submitted for reimbursement. Yes.
Okay. And then, if there's nothing else on that, just two more points, as I was stepping through, that I made notes on, so Mr. Tenelli, just let me know when you're ready to move.
Go ahead.
So under application process, applicants, just a recommendation, applicants must meet all program requirements at the time of submission. I just feel like it's important to spell it out, so that we're not wasting staff time on incomplete submissions and having to chase down paperwork. So if, at least if people know upfront, they'll be, I think, a little more diligent to just make sure they get everything that is requested together, versus, I'm sending you, you know, the written part here, but I didn't do the attached page, so. And then applicant can only receive assistance once every three years or something, I just feel like we need to spell out.
Yeah, I had that in there and then I dropped it off.
Yeah.
Okay.
But just something along those lines, because we're not doing this for people to, you know, just take advantage of. It really is meant to be a help, and even if it's, you know, during a five-year period, three-year, whatever it is, but I just feel like we need to make it clear. But those were the only notes that I had. Yes, Councilmember Mendoza?
Yeah, no, I'm still back to bullet number three. Okay, so we're saying code within the last 30 days, right? Now, when I work code, and I'm sure it hasn't changed much, let's say I get written up in my house for damage to my house, and then you guys give me code, Sean gives me 15 days. I don't do it. So then he goes and posts my house, another 15 days, still refuse. So then he submits it to district court. So that takes about three, three and a half months ago. So now I'm on my four and a half months period. Then the court says, okay, you're doing this next. So by then, it's five and a half months. So then a storm comes in, right? Then I'm claiming that, that the storm did the damage, because it's out of the 30-day limit, 30-day window. So then you guys are paying me for the stuff that I'm like, that I wasn't diligent about.
Yeah, that's a good point.
I would say because code, let's say, eventually it goes to the district court.
Which buys more time for the whole.
People know that. I mean, you know, most people fix their stuff right away, but there aren't those who challenge the system, because they know how it works. And then, you know, we'll be going further. And then after the court, court says, okay, you got 60 days to do the work. So then we're in a seven and a half month period.
And I think that's, the whole point is code violations that haven't been addressed. Anyone can get a code violation for your grass being too high, or some, you know, but you resolve it. So I think it's more so for, like you said, just trying to protect.
It's more the condition. Why are you running a month? Because if you, if your house got a tree falling down because of a storm, what do we care about the grass? So what? I mean, grass is not the problem here. I'm just saying this, making the claim against the stuff that you're in violation of, specific, that was already existing before the catastrophe happened.
And I think.
That's what I was just wearing.
Yeah, I think you raise a good point. So I, I do feel like you have to, when these are being evaluated, pull the code file for the property, just like you're pulling the real property tax on the SDAT, you know, site from Maryland, just, I feel like it should be a check. And even if it doesn't stop you, that, it does need to be noted. Code enforcement would have the back and forth, whether it was someone who just refused, like you said, to make a repair versus, you know, someone who's not trying to beat the system.
I didn't want, you know, the blighted property getting funds, you know, versus, you know, a resident who takes care of their houses, you know? So I was trying to, I almost say tiptoe into it, but I'm trying to, you know, for people that, and that's why I did the grant on a matching basis too, because, you know, they are investing in it, you know? I mean, like a blighted property is worried about that, because they're not investing in it, obviously. So that's where I was trying to get to with this, you know? Trying to firm it up, those is where we are right now.
Okay. So I think it is in a good place, at least so we have the guidelines, we have the instructions. I know you were dropping notes down. Councilmember Route, you had another point?
Yes, I have several points. Thank you for that opportunity to share. I also think that I do support what Councilmember Mendoza has stated, and so I did have a change of heart. Active code violations related to a pre-existing condition is language that we can say. So active code violations related to a pre-existing condition, that's some language that could be shared. There's also, I don't think that the amount of funding is fair, so I just want to address that. Presently, we have 15 families that were affected by the September 10th flood, based off of the information received from Director Gill. $10,000, let's say for instance, 13 of those families have a need, and 13, so then that means there'll be people left out. I don't think the amount of money is, is going to really do an assistance, and so I'm thinking like $20,000, because we've had two severe events in the town. And I think that that is a more appropriate number, rather than $10,000, knowing that we have more residents that are affected. In addition, with the, with the crash of the car into the building, still, with other residents affected, there were 14 homes displaced. So if we do the math and do the numbers, are we really just doing this to do this? Are we going, are we doing this to truly help families? So I do think that $20,000 is an appropriate mark. I also think that we should add language that states that funding is based on availability, and so that's not in there as well.
That was the note that I shared, yeah.
First come, first served.
And, well, not first come, first served. It's not first come, first served. And then we need to also add, what's the ranking process? So let's say, for instance, you receive 20 applications, they all have valid claims and concerns, how are you going to rank the need? Like, what's going to happen? Like, there needs to be some type of process, so that all recipient, or all individuals who know that apply, it's like, okay, so am I scrambling to get this together? And then also, will this be fair and equitable in different languages? Because we do have some homeowners that do not speak English. And so I would like to also see this application in at least Spanish as well. I yield back.
Thank you for those points, Councilmember Route. So for the sake of time, Mr. Tenelli, I know you were jotting down those additional notes. We do have to adjourn by nine, so is there any pushback on increasing the amount to 20,000? I will just say, the reality is, at some point, no matter what the amount is, the fund may be depleted. So we do have to be considerate that, one, we're dealing with COVID, we don't know the financial impacts as these numbers are going up. We hit over 100,000 new cases, I think, on Wednesday. So because we don't know the financial impact of that, I think that's why the initial thought was just to start small, with a matching fund up to 1,000 per family, with the understanding that we won't be able to help everyone. However, as Councilmember Route identified, we had another emergency last week. But as these things come in and awards are granted, there will, I just want to be honest, there will be a point in time where someone may apply and the funds have been exhausted for that fiscal year. So with that in mind, is there agreement on the maximum of 20K for this fund? I see, okay.
I don't. I, I think we keep going and then we get into COVID. So let's say somebody's, the home, the breadwinner of the house dies, well, that's more important than you flood a basement, so then, but we have no money, so then we have to put more money into it. And remember, we have like 719 houses plus condos. If we started adding, we're talking like, at least a million dollars for this fund, eventually.
Thank you.
To be honest, I was actually against this, because I just don't believe the town should be giving money directly. We do have a grant process, we give like, what is it, $4,000 or whatever it is. It was a small amount, so I'm okay with a small amount.
That was to organizations, so.
Yeah, so, yeah, to organizations, right.
But what I'm saying is, is like, you know, when do we stop and things going to keep happening? And emergency and catastrophe, it depends. Well, it could be snow, COVID could be part of it. And now, if we were to give like, let's say $10,000 to an organization and then they distribute the money, that leaves us out, because then we're the judges of, well, you know, I like this person better. You know, like a Mr. Carlson, well, I don't like him, why should I give him money? You know what I mean? It becomes a judgment call. I just don't think that in politics, you should be the ones to give, be the ones giving money directly.
But it really would be handled by the staff, so that removes us from that bias and any sort of ethical judgment calls, like, oh, I like this resident over that. I think that is a very good point.
Let's say it's given by, let's say, Vito and somebody else. What's stopping?
But it, it really would be handled by the staff, so that removes us from that bias and any sort of ethical judgment calls like, oh, I like this resident over that. I think that is a very good point.
Let's say veto and somebody else. What's stopping me from calling veto and putting in the good word for somebody?
I, I do agree with what Mendoza is saying and also Jocelyn also say, if it's a rating system, then you could, it'll take all that away, but I do, because a lot of that is happening. So yes, I do agree, Mendoza, of what you're saying.
And we don't have a, you know, a grant department here, so I kept it small, kept it thin.
Right.
Um, because reality is, I probably, I'm going to be managing this as well. So it's, you know, I'm trying to keep this, um, not as simple as, you know, as easy as possible for residents to apply and get them assistance.
Gotcha.
That's where, you know, um, and I understand, you know, the need and the concern, you know, but then I see, you know, it's starting to bloom up and bloom up a little bit, so it's, um, I have an idea.
So given the sake of time, I was thinking Monday.
Can I make some changes and maybe bring this back after work session on Monday?
Perfect.
Okay.
Yep, thank you.
Is that okay?
And that way we can take another look.
Mr. Tenelli, I'm going to email you a sample grant application, um, that I've written. Um, so you can always talk to me for some guidance. We have the, the resources, um, in town that we can fair up, um, this document. Um, and then I would like to request this, just ran by legal, was it ran by legal?
No, it wasn't.
Okay. So after we fair it up, I think we should run it by legal just to make sure all of the language is appropriate. I yield back.
Thank you. So we'll look out for this, for the work session on Monday.
Yep.
The other item was the 58th Avenue.
58th Avenue. Um, back in September, um, we, okay, quick backstory. 58th Avenue is funded through CDBG funds, um, for town Bladensburg. We had a total project estimated at $178,000 where we were receiving funding. Um, we looked at all the work on 58th Avenue and it needed a lot of work and we're getting funding for it, but we didn't think we could do it all within that amount of money. So what happened is we scaled down the bid and only did the milling and paving, meaning from curb to curb, okay? Just strip off two to three inches of existing roadway and do an overlay and just make repairs to the bus pads that are there. I think there's one, two, two bus pads, three bus pads. What was originally in there was new curbing and replacing the sidewalk. Um, also in there was a handicap ramps. We took all that out. We didn't think, you know, um, we could do it all within that scope. So we took all that out. The way we wrote the bid spec is, here's a base bid and for additions, um, you had to follow Prince George's County pricing. Prince George's County pricing, they adopted back in 2016 for roadwork projects. Um, you had certain price for linear feet or square feet or anything done. I think they're in the process of trying to rebid that back out again by FY '21, but we're still going off of FY '16 pricing. So for the grant agreement, um, and also for the bid documents, you have a base bid plus additional work will be done according to Prince George's County, uh, road improvement pricing. Okay. So base bid came in, um, at 100, I'm going to round up, $108,000, okay? Um, because we, we took, we took everything else out but said, you know, um, if we add this back in, will you accept this? They said yes. But, you know, the issue is we're adding back in $71,000 of work. Now, I didn't want to prove that, you know, until I brought back the mayor and council. So our, our legal counsel has been working with the architect and the contractor to work all this out and to make sure that, you know, everything's fine, everybody's in agreement, this, all this work can be done. Because one of the main reasons why I'm here today because it's very time sensitive now when the first week of November, the funds and project has to be done by the end of December, less than 60 days. Good thing about reliable contracting, um, they've been around a long time, they're their own asphalt plants, they always have trucks on the road, they're ready to go. Um, so I'm going back to mayor and council for the additional $71,000 of work that was already in the bid but taken out, but it's in there to be done according to Prince George's County pricing. Basically, we don't have to have to rebid it because that was already in there and we could do it under Prince George's County pricing. I just want to bring that back to you all because it is a large line, line item. Um, because, you know, you approved a $108,000 bid, but all of a sudden it's a, you know, it's a $171,000 job, you know? You want to know why. Um, so we are getting full funding for this and it's, I want to say shovel ready, um, it's ready to go. And thankfully, the kids are not in school full time, so we can get this done. So.
Great.
Go ahead.
Oh, no. So I was just going to clarify, so it is a financial matter. Um, we don't have to wait until the Monday council meeting to approve it.
We can do it. I mean, this is an open meeting, so anything can be done in an open meeting and it's on the agenda.
Okay. So I just wanted to clarify. So, okay, with that, is there a motion to authorize staff to move forward with the bid for 58th Avenue, given the additional work for 71, $70,000?
I so moved.
Moved by Councilmember Routh. Is there a second?
No second.
Seconded by Councilmember Blunt. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, let it be known by the saying of "I"?
Aye.
Any nays? The ayes have it. Thank you so much. So, Mr. Tenelli, with that, I know you said they're shovel ready, but again, my big concern is the weather, so hopefully they can get going.
I know. And it's, you know, it's, we have a thin staff and a thinner staff here to try and get this done. So I brought in AS2L to take the lead on this because she is, she's done a lot of the CDBG projects. So, you know, I'll just yield to her, say, please take this and run with it, so.
Great. Thank you for that. So at this time, I'm going to ask for a motion to, um, recess our open meeting and go into closed session to discuss a personnel matter. This is in line with the Maryland Article 3-3005. Is there a motion?
So.
Moved by Councilmember Mendoza. Is there a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Councilmember Lundie. All in favor, let it be known by the saying of "I"?
Aye.
I'm sorry. You're right. Uh, is there a discussion? Sorry, I'm trying to take that, because I got a note, the time and everything.
I don't think we have enough time for the, for the discussion, so I just, I don't think that we should move into a closed session because we don't have enough time to discuss the personnel matters. Um, I yield back.
I, I disagree. I think we can't have the discussion in the time given, um, but let's take it to vote and if that's the case, then we'll have to reschedule. Is there, I'm sorry. So I now call for the vote. All in favor, let it be known by the saying of "I"?
Aye.
Any nays?
Nay.
Nay.
Councilmember Blunt, I didn't hear you. Are you an aye or a nay?
Um, I'm going with nay.
All right. The nays have it. So at this time, we'll adjourn our open, uh, meeting for today. Thank you all for being here. Is there a motion to adjourn today's meeting?
I so moved.
Moved by Councilmember Routh. Is there a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Councilmember Mendoza. All in favor, let it be known by the saying of "I"?
Aye.
Any nays? The ayes have it. Thank you so much. Have a good day.
Thanks, y'all.